Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. And I'm very honored to welcome our mayor, Mayor Gaylord Baird. And I understand that you are going to presenting another Mayor's Award of Excellence. Welcome back.
Thank you. When it rains, it pours. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm so pleased to be back to give another Mayor's Award of Excellence. This one is for May 2019. It's being presented to Sergeant Cassandra Nissen. She is with the Police Department Southeast Team and is a 13-year veteran of LPD. And Captain Marty Ferenger nominated her in the categories of Customer Relations and Safety for her initiative to develop a program to improve the safety of autistic individuals who wander or who run off without the knowledge of their caregivers. Early last year, while Nissen was still a police officer on the Northeast Team, she asked Ferenger if she could develop the Autistic Safety Program. And with the help of Sergeant Todd Beam, Nissen developed a multi-layered approach. The first level was an educational component that involved Be Safe the Movie, a video service that shows autistic individuals and those with intellectual disabilities how to safely interact with police in everyday encounters. The officers became certified to teach the training in our community, and they worked with the Autism Family Network to conduct the first of many training sessions. During the Be Safe training, the officers gathered information to help law enforcement locate a person who has wandered or run off without a caregiver's knowledge. And Nissen then created a Wander Flag that officers will see on their mobile data terminals. The flag includes a photo and information provided by caregivers to help officers locate the missing person. LPD, the County Sheriff's Office, County Sheriff's Office, and the Autism Family Network received a grant from the Julia Rose Foundation to bring Project Lifesaver to the community. And this national program uses technology with highly directional receivers to locate small transmitters worn by at-risk individuals. In July, five police officers and two deputies completed 20 hours of training with Project Lifesaver tracking equipment to become certified as electronic search specialists. Nissen then worked to incorporate the Wander Flag and tracking equipment into Police Department policies and procedures and to conduct in-service training for officers. The program was also designed to expand beyond the autism community to include other at-risk individuals, such as those with Alzheimer's. Ferenger wrote, "Cassie completed much of this work while still working as a uniformed overnight street officer. Her passion for her community, especially some of our most vulnerable residents, was apparent throughout the entire process." It is my pleasure to present Cassandra Nissen with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for May, and I hope you'll join me in congratulating Officer Nissen for her hard work and commitment to the city of Lincoln. [applause] Police Chief Jeff Blymeister would like to say a few words of congratulations, and then we have a few remarks afterwards.
Chief Blymeister?
Thank you, Chair, Mayor. Thanks once again for the kind words and the recognition. And Cassie and her coworkers should be so proud of their efforts that undoubtedly are going to make an influence throughout our community. And some of the things that we, when I look back and how Cassie and Sergeant Todd Beam have brought this forward is they were so prepared, they partnered with members of the community, including Dan Young, who is here to support Cassie today and his company. So they brought in a public-private partnership. And I know that what they have established is now being emulated by other law enforcement agencies, including our neighbor to the east, who we like to compare ourselves with all the time, who are following Cassie's lead. And so, congratulations, Cassie. Well done. Come on up.
Well, thank you for this award. It's really, I'm accepting it on behalf of everybody who's helped out with this program. This is not me. This is a group of us that have worked very hard. So I'm grateful for the support of the chief and the assistant chief, who's also here, and my captain, Marty Ferenger, my captain at the time, Marty Ferenger. I'm very grateful for all his support because without his support, this couldn't happen. As well as my current captain, who's also here, Captain Mike Wolman in the back. So I'm very grateful for all the support that this program has had, and also from people in the community, like the chief said, and Cindy Lamb, actually, is a part of the Autism Family Network Board, and she was very supportive throughout this process, and we couldn't have done it without her. As well as Dan Young, who is the head of the Julia Rose Foundation, that they were the ones that donated the money to get the program started. So we really could not have done it without him and all his support as well. So thank you, Dan. And of course, my family. My dad is here, and my daughters are here in the front row, and then my husband, who is in the military, is sitting there, and he's seeking in the back. So of course, my family has been so supportive. So we really just hope that this program continues to grow, and just seeing how much it's touched the lives of the caregivers has been extremely touching. So, and one other person, Todd Beam, I don't know if he's here, I guess. I'm sorry, I didn't see him. But he also worked very hard on the program as well and continues to work hard on the program.
You wanted to extend congratulations. He's on a conference call with Motorola regarding the radio upgrade.
Okay. Well, it couldn't have done it without all these people. It was a huge group effort, so not just me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Well, thank you for joining us. Now we will welcome you to the official part of our meeting. I would like us all to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business is something that we have long anticipated and are very excited. At this moment in time, we will open the floor for nominations to fill the vacancy for the City Council seat.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you allow me, I'd like to nominate Sandra Washington to fill the empty seat on the Lincoln City Council.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Seconded. Is there any discussion?
Look that way.
Yes, sir.
This is a good thing.
This is a very good thing. And we're so very honored that Sandra has accepted. So Theresa, I think we're ready to take a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I must fulfill a formal obligation. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? We will move on to a vote, then. All right. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Can we vote by calling our own team? Because for one nomination, I believe our vote procedure, you vote by saying Washington and McGuinness.
Okay. Bowers?
Washington.
Christensen?
Washington.
McGuinness?
Washington.
Raybold?
Washington.
Shob?
Washington.
Ward?
Washington.
Motion carried six to zero. Congratulations. I'm going to do an applause, yes. So we look forward to the officials swearing in at the conclusion of our open-mic session. So on to the fun stuff. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on any item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and we ask that anyone providing testimony be sure and sign in on the pink sheets at the podium. And after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And so this evening, we do have open mic. Theresa, will you go ahead and please read the first item of business?
Yes. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Is there anyone wishing to testify on any of these items? Seeing none?
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Item 1A was introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ward and seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Let's call a roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Items 1B and 2A and B were introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Bowers, seconded by McGuinness. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. We just have one item. It's the application of Matthew Myers, doing business as Happy Raven, for a special designated license for an event at Pioneer's Park Nature Center at 3201 South Cottington Avenue on June 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Is there someone here from Happy Raven? Don't be shy, it's okay. Just give your names and addresses.
I'm Andrea Foss. I'm actually the coordinator at the Pioneer's Park Nature Center, 1830 Rancho Road, Lincoln, 68502.
I'm Sarah Erdlin, manager at the Happy Raven. The Happy Raven is at 122 North 11th Street at 68508.
Wonderful. Tell us a little bit about your event on June 29th.
Sure. So the event is a fundraiser for the Friends of the Pioneer's Park Nature Center. We are doing our third annual Bytes, Bikes, and Bison event. So it's a trail ride, but also a number of activities happening onsite. We're going to have a little Strider Bike Course, yoga in the nature center. We will also have food trucks and some alcohol sales for participants who sign up to come for the day.
Andrea put this all together. She did a really nice job.
But it sounds like a lot of fun. What happens if there's inclement weather?
We will cancel the event if there's inclement weather, and then ticket sales will be considered a donation to the Friends of the Pioneer's Park Nature Center.
Okay, terrific. Are there any questions? Wonderful. Thank you. Be sure and sign in.
Approval of item 4A.
Second. Moved to approval by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I miss John Camp now. He usually does the motion on that, in tradition.
This is the new John Camp.
No, no. Are you the new John?
Okay. I don't think we're going to have any more discussion on this one, so please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. We just have one item. It is appointing Dan Marvin as Director of the Urban Development Department. Thank you. We do miss you.
Well, the feeling is mutual. But I am not very far away, and I'm so pleased to be here today to introduce the nominee for Urban Development Director. Most of you know Dan Marvin. He was an at-large member of the Lincoln City Council himself from 2005 to 2009, and prior to that, he served as a member of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission. From 2009 to 2013, Dan served as the Secretary and Executive Director of the West Haymarket Joint Public Agency and played key roles in the development of the governance and financial structure of the JPA. He has also served on the city's Infrastructure Finance Committee and the Lincoln Economic Development Task Force. He's currently the Chair of the South of Downtown Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and he is a member of the Community Health Endowment and Lincoln Electric System Boards. He has also worked as a financial advisor since 1982, and he earned his bachelor's degree from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln in 1981. I think you all know him well for his service to our city, and I'm so excited that he is willing to put himself forward in this new, this new position as the Urban Development Director for Lincoln. I give you Dan Marvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, my name is Dan Marvin. I live at 5918 Rolling Hills Boulevard. I'm thrilled, it was a wonderful introduction by the mayor. I'm thrilled to work with you all and work with the mayor in urban development. It's a department that I'm fairly familiar with. There's a lot of familiar faces in that department. Some of them are at the back here, and I'm willing to take any questions, direction that I would take the department. Any questions you'd have, I'd be happy to answer them.
You're getting off the hook easy today.
Okay.
Well, we won't be so nice next time you come up.
We do have an open-door policy up in urban development, so I would encourage all of you to come up. We want to make a, have a very collegial relationship with the council and of course with the mayor, too. Thank you.
Okay. Dare I say it? This means you're the new Dave Landis.
I will try.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say, Mr. Marvin, thank you for your willingness to help us out and serve.
Yes, well, I'm thrilled. I'm absolutely thrilled. Thank you.
Terrific. And is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? I guess we can call the vote.
All right. If not, we can vote on this item. It was introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGuinness. Any discussion? Let's call a roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing ordinance's second reading.
I will call items 6A through D together, as they are all related to human resources. They are amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter C by creating the classification of Community Forestry Inspector. Item B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A by creating the classification of Community Outreach Forester. Item 6C is amending the pay schedule for the eight classifications to delete the classification of Forestry Operations Supervisor. And 6D is amending the pay schedule for the M classifications to delete the classification of City Forester and Golf Manager.
Good afternoon, Council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. 6A, creating a new classification for Community Forestry Inspector. This is all related to the Parks and Rec Department gearing up for Emerald Ashborr Disease and having more staff on hand to work through that process. 6B is another position, somewhat related, Community Outreach Forester, which will do more public outreach in terms of replacement of trees and such of that nature. 6C is cleanup in terms of deleting a classification of Forestry Operations Supervisor, which is no longer utilized in the pay schedules, and the same for 6D, deleting two positions, City Forester and Golf Manager. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
I have a question. So the Community Forestry Inspector is considered a regular City Forester? Is that fair to say?
Well, it's in that job family. It will be another position that will head up the inspection processes along with the other staff, but will oversee that inspection work.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Is there someone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is item 6E, approving an agreement between the city and Verizon Wireless for the placement of a tower and telecommunications facilities upon city property generally located at South 84th and Yankee Hill Road.
I'm Grady Walkquist, 2018 East Mimosa, Springfield, Missouri. I'm representing KGI Wireless and Verizon Wireless, and basically to answer any questions or expound on the terms of the lease. Steve, Stephen and I have been working on it for a year and a half, something like that.
Okay. Could we have a couple of questions of law?
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney.
How does this compare with the other agreements that we have with some of our other communications providers?
Very similar. We always try to tailor it to the wireless company we're working with and to the location, so there might be some minor changes, but we follow the same essential template. For those of you that are new on the council, we have a number of these agreements with different companies around the city. One of the things that you might be curious about is where does the money go? And our policy is that whether it's Parks, then we go to the Parks Department. This particular location, which is down near Jensen Park, is owned by the, or managed by the Water Department, and so we go to Transportation Utilities, the lease payment.
Hey, Richard?
Is this a co-location tower at all?
No, it's a brand-new tower that the city will own once it's constructed, and Verizon will lease space, ground space, thirty foot by twenty foot. The pole is actually outside of the lease area, so you can have other carriers have ground space around that monopole.
Can you have other carriers on your pole there?
Your pole.
Okay. All right.
That's why it's designed the way it is. So you will own the tower after we complete construction, and then if any other carrier wants to go on it, they will, excuse me, they will deal with you.
Lease from us.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to testify on this matter? Okay, let's go on.
All right. Next, then, is item 6F, change of zone 19009, application of Matterhorn LLC for a change from 02 Suburban Office District to 03 Office Park District on property generally located at 6900 L Street.
Good afternoon. My name's Annie Brown. I'm with the Morrow Poppy Law Firm. We're located at 201 North Eighth Street, Suite 300, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508, and I'm here on behalf of our client, Matterhorn LLC. Excuse me. The subject track is located at 6900 L Street, and it's adjacent to the St. Elizabeth's Medical Complex. Matterhorn, which is primarily owned and operated by Doctors Greg and Margaret Sutton, have owned the building for over 30 years, and they primarily use the building as medical office space. Lot is currently zoned as 02 Office, and is surrounded by 03 to the north and west, Hospital R1 to the south, and B1 office space to the east. Matterhorn now has three medical tenants in its building, and they're looking to put signage up on the building that would potentially be in the ground in order to direct their patients to the correct building. The signage restrictions under 02 are more restrictive than in 03, as it's limited to 25 square feet. 03 allows for signs up to 500 square feet. So Matterhorn's proposed wall sign is going to be eight by eight, and that's not possible under the current 02. So we're asking that the zone for 6900 L Street be changed from 02 to 03 to allow it to install its sign.
Are there any questions? Would planning like to come up and speak on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything out of the ordinary for this request?
Paul Barnes, I'm the Long Range Manager for the Planning Department. Actually, no, this request is pretty textbook in terms of a requested zoning change. The staff report is recommending approval, as well as the Planning Commission recommendation from May 15th.
Any questions? Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next are items 6G through I. They are approval of a conditional annexation and zoning agreement for the development and annexation of property generally located at 6301 North 7th Street, annexing approximately 4.5 acres, and a change of zone for a change from AG Agricultural to R1 Residential. This is all located at 6301 North 7th Street.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the City Council and future City Council person. My name's Peter Cat. I'm the, I'm appearing on behalf of myself. I'm the manager of Tudan and Pete Properties LLC, which is the owner of the property. This is a proposal to subdivide, rezone, and annex into the city approximately 4.5-acre existing one lot just north of 7th and superior, adjacent to the existing city of Lincoln city limits. Planning staff recommended approval. It was on the consent agenda. Planning Commission recommends, recommended approval of the City Council unanimously. I'd ask for your approval and would be happy to answer any questions you might have about this matter.
Any questions?
I have a staff question when it comes in.
Staff, please.
Hello, Paul Barnes, Planning Department.
Mr. Barnes, thanks for coming forward. A few months ago, we did some annexation, which was kind of cleanup, where we had little spots that were annexed and, or were part of the city, weren't in the city limits. They were, are we going in the same direction with this? This looks, I'm not sure where this is according to the city boundaries, but are we creating more areas that are kind of in gaps between this and other ones?
I think what you're referring to, Councilman Shob, is the city-initiated annexation package that was brought before the council in 2017, and that was a study that was a comprehensive look at areas adjacent to the city, you know, throughout all quadrants. There were areas in this vicinity that were looked at, but were not brought forward for recommendation of annexation at that time. This is a separate action and brought forward by an individual property owner, so this is a little bit different in that case.
I understand. Thank you.
I will note, though, that in the future, if there is an annexation study done by the city staff, that this area would likely be looked at as well.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's move on. All right, next is 6J, Amending Chapter 5.38 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to rental dwellings, hotels, motels, and rooming houses by amending Section 5.38.1010 definitions to add a definition for a rooming house.
Good afternoon, Chris Connolly, Chief Assistant City Attorney. When we came in last month with our other changes to 5.38, it was about how to do other interior inspections of particular units. As we were drafting the language for those amendments, we noticed that the Lincoln Municipal Code does not have a definition of rooming house. It does have a definition for rooming units, but not rooming house. And so we added it in at that time, we thought we would go ahead and do that with the other changes that we were making. As we went through the various drafts of the other changes though, as we presented it to the council for final approval, for whatever reason, for some reason, the rooming house definition was left out of the final draft that was presented to the council. But we fully intended to have that in there, in fact, we had it on a request form. So I apologize for that inadvertent mistake, but I'm here to tell you that this rooming house definition has absolutely no impact on any of the other changes that were made in the amendments that were approved last month by the council. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Oh, by the way, we have a total of four rooming houses in the city, so we're not talking about a large number of facilities that are affected here.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to testify on this item? Please come forward and sign in.
Hello, my name is Robert Way, 801 Elavato Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska. I just had a thought based on listening to Councilman Christensen the last week, is there any way this change would affect people who are out using their houses in Airbnb? Because when I saw rooming house, and that just jumped into my head.
I think we'll have our legal counsel come back up and explain.
The answer is no.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Way, did you have any other comments? All right, is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, let's go on to the next item. If not, that concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Ordinance's third reading, item 7A is approving a real estate sales agreement for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 4040 North 48th Street to South 77, Inc., introduced by Schob. So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7B is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction with Union Bank and Trust Company for the issuance, sale, and delivery of certificates of participation with the principal amount not to exceed $3,700,000, introduced by Schob. So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob and seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, let's call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7C is authorizing the issuance of sanitary sewer revenue bonds, Series 2019, in a principal amount not to exceed $29 million, introduced by Schob. So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? This is a lot of money for a bond issue, but it's going towards growth and development in our city. Let's call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7D, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation stormwater drainage and flood management system bonds, Series 2019, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,900,000, introduced by Schob. So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, do you remember the number of properties that will be taken out of the floodplain by this project?
I do, it's gonna be 480 properties out of the floodplain issue. It's part of Dead Man's Run and the majority of this, about 6.6 million of this 9.9 million bond that was approved by our voters in May is going to Dead Man's Run. So I know the property owners have testified, I think numerous times before us and before the Planning Commission and other organizations, and the voters spoke wisely and we're gonna move forward with this and make improvements to our city. Let's call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7E is authorizing the issuance of water revenue refunding bonds, Series 2019, in a principal amount not to exceed $12,500,000, introduced by Schob. So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Schob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? This is a good thing, because it's gonna save our taxpayers 1.5 million dollars of interest on the existing bonds.
She stole your line.
Okay, it's a good line.
It's a good line. Please call the roll. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through D. Ordinance's on first reading are items 9A through C. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time since it is an open microphone session. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward? Come on down.
I'll fill this out after my comments. Good afternoon, my name is Lou Broatz, I live at 5020 South 56th Street. I try to stay out of here and so I'll make this as brief as possible and hopefully I share the thoughts of everybody here that y'all don't see me again for a very long time. Congratulations, first are in order for everybody that is new to this City Council. I would also like to extend that to the Mayor-elect who is graceless with her presence today, but is gone. But I would also like to extend that to the just-voted-on council person. I personally hope, after the years I've constantly rabble-roused for change, that with such a drastic change in our city government systems over the last two months, that we start seeing real substantial parts of that. That includes in our education system, our criminal justice system, which continues to affect our poorest amounts, our poorest people in this city, and quite frankly, our wage system that continues to hold more than 40% of our children eligible for free or reduced lunch, that speaks to what their parents are making per hour. On a happier note, and I'm words smarter than my own, I would like to share a poem to end my time. This was written by Andre Lord and it's called "A Litany for Survival." And it's for you ma'am. For those of us who live at the shoreline, standing upon the constant edges of decision, crucial and alone. For those of us who cannot indulge the passing dreams of choice, who live in doorways coming and going in the hours between dawns, looking inward and outward at once before and after, seeking a now that can breed futures like bread in our children's mouths, so their dreams will not reflect the death of ours. For those of us who are imprinted with fear like a faint line in the center of our foreheads, learning to be afraid with our mother's milk, for by this weapon, this illusion of some safety to be found, the heavy-footed hoped to silence us. For all of us, this instant and this triumph, we were never meant to survive. And when the sun rises, we are afraid it might not remain, how true. When the sun sets, we are afraid it might not rise in the morning. When our stomachs are full, we are afraid of ingestion. When our stomachs are empty, we are afraid we may never eat again. When we are loved, we are afraid love will vanish. And when we are alone, we are afraid love will never return. And when we speak, we are afraid that our words will not be heard nor welcomed. But when we are silent, we are still afraid. So it's better to speak, remembering we were never meant to survive. Thank you all very much for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the chamber at this time? Seeing, no, no one come forward. This is the most exciting part of the meeting, I think. We have an opportunity of swearing in our very new City Councilwoman. Sandra, do you want to come forward? And Teresa, you get to do the honors?
I do. I wish I could just, nice to meet you.
Should I stand?
Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm-
I do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support-
That I will support-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska-
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Of the Office of City Council-
Of the Office of City Council-
In and for Lincoln, Nebraska-
In and for Lincoln, Nebraska-
According to law-
According to law-
And the best of my ability-
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Sandra, I would love it if you want to say a few words and introduce members of your family.
I would love to do that. First, thank you very much. This has been a whirlwind and I couldn't be any more excited to serve the city of Lincoln and to work with all of you. Today, my spouse Deb Sirksona and our daughter Bella Washington came to support me this afternoon and I have the best in-laws in the whole wide world. My mother-in-law Bev Lightner, my mother-in-law Sherry Lightner, my father-in-law Lynn Lightner, sister-in-law and brother-in-law Shelley and Tom Thorpe. Did I miss anybody? Oh, Doug, hey! He's like a brother-in-law's brother-in-law, anyway, he's a brother of a brother-in-law, Doug Thorpe.
All right.
That's who's here.
Well, wonderful. Well, we certainly truly look forward to working with you and having you seated up here next week on the dais. And we'll certainly spend some time with you after the meeting briefing you on all the committees that we can't wait for you to sign up for.
I look forward to that.
And if there is nothing further before us this evening, I would entertain a motion of adjournment.
Move adjournment.
Second. Moved by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion?
Nope, discussion.
We are adjourned.
We gotta vote.
We gotta vote.
We gotta vote. And you can't discuss it.
We already voted.
No.
Not to adjourn.
No, adjournment.
All right. Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, now we are adjourned.